Good evening, members of the board, attending neighbors and friends. My name is Tim Johnson of project architect. This is a proposed residential development. This is our third presentation to the board, third redesign. And just to give you an idea of where this site is located, here's Hancock, and here's Adams, where they converge. Right before is Johnson Ave., and then Gilson Road. This is a unique site in many ways. It is accessed by two roads at different ends of the property. It has 11-foot grade change from Johnson to Gilson. And the zoning district boundary cuts through the property. So it's been a very, it's a very difficult site, but we feel that we've provided a solution, a design solution that sticks well with the abutters we're looking for and also what the board was looking for. So having said that, our last scheme that we presented was a five-story, 24-unit building with 39 parking spaces. This, or 38 parking spaces. This scheme before you is a five-story building, 18 dwelling units, and 29 parking spaces, which gives a park ratio of 1.26 spaces per dwelling unit, 1.5 required. And the entire building footprint is in the business C zoning district. We do not encroach on the residence A zoning district, as we did in the previous scheme. So this is, this is the view from Johnson Ave., showing the garage entrance and the main entrance. This is the view from Gilson, showing the garage entrance and the main entrance. In the previous scheme, we had columns seeing the ground, making the building appear more massive. All the columns are down, all the columns are gone. Everything is either cantilevered or overhanging on the building. The footprint is entirely in business C zoning district. So these will be 18 dwelling units, two-bedroom, two-bath, around 1,100 square feet. We have a abutment servicing all floors, which makes each unit handicap adaptable. This is the site plan off of Gilson. Before, we were set back 30 feet from our abutment here on Linden Court. Now we're set back 60 feet. We are set back, we were set back 10 feet on the other side, now we're set back 12 and a half feet. So we meet all the setback requirements for the zoning district. This is the site plan off of Johnson Ave., showing the right-of-way to our garage entrance and our main entrance. So we have six spaces, six parking spaces off this garage, off of Johnson Ave., and off of Gilson, we have 15-car garage. We've submitted a trash and recycling plan to the board tonight. We have a trash room on the Gilson side, and we have a trash room on the Johnson Ave. We also have a landscape plan. Showing planting along the north side of the property, which is the parking lot. We have planting along the east side, which is the abutment with Linden Court. And we have some miscellaneous planting along the other side of the building. Of course, this building will comply with the Scratch Energy Code in the city of Quincy, which is 20% more energy efficient than current code. We also adhere to the Dark Sky Initiative. All lighting on this building will be one of two things: downlit and shielded, or a motion sensor. So minimizing light pollution to our abutters. Exterior materials will be using fiber cement products. I'm sure you're aware of several of them. Arid plank, arid plank, we have shindles in arid plank, and we have flatboard in arid plank. The windows will be fiberglass, doors and windows will be fiberglass frames. And you can see we have selected colors already for the building. We did revise our traffic study by Jack Gillum Associates, and I'll just read you the executive summary, which is two sentences, three sentences. 18 apartment units will generate approximately 13 trips during the morning weekday peak hour, and 10 outbound trips, 13 trips, 10 outbound and 3 inbound. So each day, you'll have 10 outbound trips and 3 inbound trips for this project. As can be seen by these two exhibits, the projected traffic impact on the neighboring streets due to this project will be de minimis, which is negligible, especially after discounted trips previously generated by the two multifamily homes. So I know we're not in front of the zoning board, but we have a zoning analysis for this project. We will need relief for two items. One is lot size, and one is lot frontage. We do not need relief for height, FAR, which is your density multiplier, setbacks, parking, open space. We have fulfilled all those requirements of the zoning district. So only two sectors of the code we need relief from, lot size, lot size and frontage. And with that, I will turn it over to the board for questions. Oh, I'm sorry, where's my, I have a civil engineer here. I apologize.
It's Michael Joyce, Joyce Consulting Group, the engineer for the project. Just to follow up on Tim's point about traffic, I think, Tim, you said 10 trips outbound, 3 trips inbound, that's during the peak hour, if that's not all day. But I think the traffic report estimated 120 trips over the day for the project. But so as Tim had mentioned, we have 14,200 square foot lot, but 11-foot difference in grade from the Johnson Ave. side to the Gilson Road side. Gilson Road is 11 feet lower. Currently proposing a 18-unit building with 21 parking spaces inside, 6 parking spaces off of the Johnson Ave. on the interior, 15 in the lower level off Gilson Road, and then 8 service spaces. There'll be ADA accessible spaces both in the garage and one out in the exterior parking The proposed storm water will be collected from the roof and roof leaders, directed to an infiltration area below the parking area. The parking lot runoff will be collected via catch basin, the storm septic inlet catch basin, which will treat it, remove the oil and grit, and also direct it to the infiltration area. It's a very similar system, as was proposed previously. The dimensions that have just been shifted slightly in order to make it, now that we have added space in the parking areas, shifted away from the property lines a little bit more. Also proposing new water, sewer, gas services to the building. Proposed transformer will be off of Johnson Avenue to the south of the building. All the sidewalk, there'll be new concrete sidewalks in the area of the proposed project, the addition of ADA compliant ramps, Linden Court, and then also across Gilson Road to Linden Court. The interior parking spaces will be curved, landscaped surrounding. And I think that's, that's about it.
Could the applicant walk us through the discussions with the city council and the neighbors since your last, before the board?
The discussion was, there was a concern about the residence A issue. They pulled it out of residence A, they cut it back, put it into the business sector. And then there was the issue about parking, and they pulled it within the footprint of the building.
Were there a public meeting, I'm sorry? I mean, the, what happened between the last meeting and...
The developer spoke with the counselor, and then the counselor posted it to her website.
Okay, so no public meeting?
No.
Okay.
Members of the board, Paul Heinz, Assistant City Solicitor. Councilor LaFares is involved in the finance committee meeting upstairs. She said she was down there, but she was just called up for a vote. She is asked that you allow her the opportunity to speak to the matter, so if you can defer a public question out of to her, she may be able to inform you as well.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, this is a continued public hearing. So I would ask anyone who wishes to speak, identify themselves, and hopefully accommodate. We have sheets over on the window sill for those that don't want to speak, that want to be recorded. So thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Andrew Sutton, Weber and Bronstein, Three Center Plaza, Boston, Massachusetts, representing the owner of the lot, Sullivan Tire property. I can answer your question, Vice Chairman Barry. There has been no discussion with the abutters, and I was frankly surprised that there was no outreach, given my lengthy comments at the last meeting. Point of fact, I'm not going to raise or debate zoning issues with respect to the property. I disagree that it's only two relief requests that they're going to need to make. I could just point out an accessory parking issue that I'm seeing right there in the RA district, where guests aren't necessarily allowed to park in the RA district. But we'll leave that for the ZBA. My concern is this: we're here tonight not to throw shade on this project or cast dispersion. Our issue, and a lot of the others', other abutters' issue, has always been scope. And we're seeing the project scaled down, it's headed in the right direction. But what we hoped, by appearing at the meeting, was the ability to sit down with the developer and try to avoid any further issues with their process, so that the town can realize the redevelopment of the blighted property that they purchased. That really hasn't happened. I would prefer not to have to continue to oppose this design, and I would hope that the board would suggest that the developer sit down with the abutters, which, you know, frankly, I think everybody here thought was probably going to happen. I've been following Counselor LaFares' blog, and she only updated it on May 30. And, you know, that wasn't a significant amount of time to reach out to the neighbors. So effectively, I'm surprised at the developer's lack of communication or consideration for the issues raised by not just the commercial neighbor, but the residential neighbors, to see if this design works for them. I understand their timeframe and their timetables, but I really do think that if we sat down and maybe took this to another meeting, we would be able to get a plan before you that might work for everybody.
Sir.
Yeah, Richard Garret, I live at 28 Turkey Gilson Road, and no one reached out to us, and I did directly, and they find out that this is a five-story building, whereas in actual fact, from Gilson Road, if you flick the page, it's a six-story building. Do you want to plug the page? And that's my point, that's been my argument all along, that in a neighborhood of predominantly single and two-family homes, people have a six-story building, people in the century, and this is Gilson Road, and they're here, the six stories. So that's my point.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wants to speak? Sir.
Joseph Shaheen, the owner of Forte Johnson Ave. Still talking about the same things, parking and driveway from Forte Johnson Ave, if you're talking about 128, if they said the correct amount of cars can go. That street is driveway, it's not a street. It's one-way, so it's not two cars will go into that street. So when you go in, you have to, somebody has to move to the sidewalk for them to pass. Again, when you get to Hancock Street, okay, there's no view to the people coming and going from Hancock Street. So you have to cross the sidewalk of Hancock Street for you to see the car is coming and going. And then where the snow is going to go? If the people parking on that driveway, on the street, it's only one car. This is two-car garage. So it's one-way goes back and forth. How they gonna be imagining, you know, going back and forth when it's only one car can go this way? And there is no police or fire department, and it's the right way, you cannot use the right way. They are using the right way. That's illegal for them to use that. I have a right to go there, unlike anybody else. When you have that kind of high building, we are, we are close, I don't know, there's no, there's no distance between me and 18 Johnson Ave. It's like probably eight feet or 10 feet. That's going to be, all, everything is blocked from the, from the north shore, from the north of the house, you know, Forte Johnson Ave, and from the south of the Johnson Ave. That's going to be blocked, it's not, it's not existent.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wants to speak?
Mr. Heinz. Good members of the board, Paul Heinz, Assistant City Solicitor. The planning department did ask me to review the issues with regard to the right-of-way that is so-called Johnson Avenue. And I did provide the board with a memorandum, comprehensive memorandum back in April. And following conversations with Attorney Sutton, I did give it a supplemental one yesterday, which had requested, and I see that it's happened, to put an additional condition in the site plan review permit, which required the applicant to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the law department their rights in Johnson Avenue and any rights that others may have, including a portion of it that is on Lot B, which becomes the footprint of a portion of this building. So I do see that it was included in the, in the recommended findings, in the recommended order. So I'm thankful for that. If there are any other questions, I'm certainly here available for you.
Thank you, Attorney Heinz. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Arthur Kianavas, manager of the Ifred D'Enzo Trust, who are owners of the Sullivan Tire. I haven't seen a copy of the, of the study done for traffic. I'm asking, the board has the engineer studied and addressed the problem that Mr. Shaheen actually has, has brought forward, and we echoed and shared his sentiments from the last meeting. If we were to drive down there tonight, I think I said this the first time, you would have a hard time making access or getting access to Hancock Street without being blind to the traffic coming from the left. So as you're traveling out the driveway, Sullivan Tire's building is to the left. Sullivan Tire's building is on a zero-lot line. Effectively, you're right directly on the edge of our property line. It's made out of brick, it's not made out of glass, you can't see through it. Any car that travels in a direction towards Hancock Street has to, by design, this is the way it was designed, this is the way it was done, physically go across the sidewalk in order to be able to get a side line directly to the left. Now, I dare say, there's a light there. We all know that lights are designed for traffic flow. They stop cars from going with a red light, they allow cars to go with a green light. Unfortunately, through the laws of nature, not everybody follows these laws. Speeding tickets are given for going too fast, tickets are given for going through red lights. In this particular case, on this particular road, I use the word "road" because for all intents and purposes, I dare say, when the developer goes forward for his financing, unless he's got a lot of money, he's going to pay cash out of his pocket, he's going to go for title insurance. I defy a title examiner to take a look at this particular street, road, access, easement, call it what you want, and be able to determine that the rights on Johnson Road are inherently feasible for the developer to be able to get this title insurance. So as far as I'm concerned, my issue is safety, first and foremost. Whoever comes out of that road and tries to beat that red light, tries to beat the yellow light, can't possibly see what's on his left. He's going to be looking left and right, like we all do. But when he looks to the right, he can see perfectly well. When he looks to the left, he's going to see a brick wall. That, if there was nobody on the street, there was nobody going up and down that sidewalk, in one way, nothing should happen. But you have a center directly next door, which generates foot traffic. I don't know what the hours of operation of the center next door, maybe, maybe you gentlemen and ladies might be able to tell me, but people come out of there with baby carriages, with kids. That's a health center of some sort. And if a person wants to beat that yellow light, just to get out on Hancock Street, like we all do, I've run through tons of yellow lights. I'm sure everybody here has probably gone through yellow lights, too. It's only human nature. But in this particular case, in that particular area, you are creating an accident waiting to happen. I expect to get sued at some point if something isn't done to correct that particular problem. Keeping in mind that that brick wall is a brick wall. Cars go through brick walls all the time. We see it in the newspaper, we see it, we see it in the news all the time. People go through brick walls, they get killed. Well, in this particular case, I really don't think that anybody's going to be going that fast to go through this, this brick wall, but keep in mind, I've got people on the other side of that brick wall, in that building. So the site itself really is not conducive to a lot of traffic, period. It was designed originally for three lots. How many people could be on those three lots? Four, five, six, maybe seven? Here, you're telling us there's going to be 18 units. The traffic survey is telling us they're going to have only 10 people coming out during the morning, and 3 people or 4 people returning, I can't remember what was said here. But I'd like to see whether or not the traffic survey does in fact, the engineer does in fact, address that problem of the building, our building, my building, on a left-hand side with access coming out to Hancock Street, without creating a dangerous problem for whoever is crossing the street or coming across that driveway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kianavas.
Just wanted to point out that the, this garage off of Johnson Ave is now significantly smaller than it was previously. I think previously it had 10 or 12 spaces, now it has 6 proposed spaces, and I believe the plan is to have those assigned to residents, so that there won't be any visitors accessing through Johnson Ave. In addition, as Mr. Kianavas had mentioned, there is a traffic light at the end of Johnson Ave, and that traffic light is actuated, so there's a traffic loop in the ground there, parked, the sidewalk. So that's just, just pretty knowledge.
Can I make a point also? And it was brought up the last day about the size of these garage openings, like, I think it was mentioned that are they going, whatever size, that can, two cars, you know, move in and out at the same time? Maybe you can pass back to Tim.
The garage doors now are currently 12 feet wide.
Both of them.
12.
12 feet, so two cars can go back and forth.
If the board, if the board wants to, can certainly enlarge those doors to whatever you think the place can pass.
Well, I don't know what, but I would say a minimum of at least 16 feet, but that's, in general, those 12 feet, if you, you walk at two cars. And a lot of these parking spots are diagnosed, described as compact parking spots? I mean, is that...
Not on, not on this plan, no.
Not on this one? Okay.
We're pretty true to the required sizes. There are no compact...
And that's all street parking spots, and it's open for them?
That's correct. We don't show any compact spaces. But we can certainly widen doors if the board wants.
Well, it would only make sense, because I mean, you already have traffic issues. There's someone trying to get out, someone trying to get in, they can't back down, you know, it's full dead-end streets, you can't back out of either street, so that would be a disaster.
There's no way, there's no room for two cars to go back and through. There, there is no room. You have one, right way of, of one car.
So Johnson Ave right way is 25 feet wide. So right way is 25 feet wide, is right of way on Johnson Ave. So you could get two cars in one direction.
I don't think, because we have no path on the street.
Well, right now, it's, it's an unimproved street.
Yeah, so it's tight on the street, so where is it going to be two cars? It's on the one side, it's hard to get through to drive.
Existing conditions may not allow two cars to pass, but you do have a 25-foot right way. If you improve it, you could get two cars passing in direction.
If I could just ask a question, Tim, is there not room within the garage for two cars to maneuver back and forth? It's a 24-foot wide aisle between parking spaces.
Yes. The garage is designed so that cars can turn and head nose-first out the door, so there wouldn't be any backing out. We have a 24-foot wide aisle on the lower floor, right, 24-foot wide aisle on the lower floor, and the upper floor has a very, yeah, let me show there. So we have 24 feet here, and Mike, I believe you've done some...
I have, we've performed some turning movements within the garage to ensure that cars maneuver around the columns and also back out without any significant issue.
So...
Back out of space.
Back out, and then head nose-first. On the Gilson side, you can see here, we have space where you can head out nose-first on the Gilson side.
The intention of the 12-foot wide door was not to have two cars pass at the same time, but wait for one to come in or out, and that's right.
Well, like the last week, it was brought up that, you know, obviously on the two-car traffic, it's a better idea for traffic on the two streets because they are there.
I just, I just want to add one of the things of what they said, when you're coming from Hancock Street, and that, the light, and you come in and you want to come into Johnson Ave, that's 90 degrees, okay? There's no, you cannot widen it to come in into the Johnson Ave. So so many times, you have, you will step up on sidewalk. So if a car's going and you're coming in to Johnson Ave, somebody's going to move back and forth. So that's going to be holding traffic on Hancock Street, or the other guy, if he can drive backwards, okay, that's going to be a problem. So imagine if it's coming few cars, it's 128, they're taking it back and forth on Hancock Street and Johnson Ave, that's a lot of that.
If I could, I think on the Johnson Ave entrance, it's a six-car garage.
Right.
So if there were two single-family homes there, they could each have three cars, I would imagine. Or if there were two, two-family homes, or whatever.
I have four family homes.
Right, so you have...
So we have five cars.
Right, you have five cars on your site. This, for the number of units on the site, has few cars going on Johnson. These are the only cars that will be going down Johnson Ave, are the six cars in that lot.
Wait, so there are three?
Absolutely interrupt. We have the, has the parking, what do they call it, that building on Hancock Street, where there's, when you go into Johnson Ave, they're putting them on the left. They have, in the end of it, they have parking, fit about 16 cars, 14 cars. So those cars, those cars is coming into Johnson Ave each.
Sure. But what they're proposing for Johnson Ave, for this building, is only six automobiles. And I believe the, these cars that get these spaces will know, it's not like they're going to be fighting for spaces with the people on the first floor, right? They'll be assigned spaces, yeah.
Sorry, sort of sharpening your point, there are three lots there now. Even if it's a single family, you probably have two cars per family, or six cars, so that's all we're going into the garage on Johnson Ave, is six cars.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, not to complicate the roadway issue any further, I just wanted to point out that, you know, Johnson Ave, for all intents and purposes, as we're discussing it, is, is the area that's up on Lots B and C, and that this right-of-way here is only a 20-foot right-of-way that extends a lot across the health center land. So it's not as simple as a 25-foot area, or an Ave, or roadway. It's, it really is more complicated and uncertain as to the width of the roadway... It's, it really is more complicated and uncertain as to the width of the roadway down here, the status of that roadway. I mean, you know, it's, again, it's, it's an issue that I'm not gonna try to dispose of, I've talked to Paul about this at length before the hearing, and, you know, we both agree to disagree on some issues, but we both recognize that there are potential issues here with respect to the roadway that need to be resolved, which I think is reflected in your.
If I could speak to that. We haven't had a disagreement on the width of the road. We've only had.
Correct.
I do not agree with you on.
On other issues, other issues.
I will say that of the reserved rights in Johnson Ave, nobody has a right to park on Johnson Ave. So if anybody's parking on Johnson Ave, that is an offender. Twenty-five feet or even twenty feet is wide enough for two cars to pop, to pass. So I believe one of your conditions is that we're opposed to no parking on Johnson Ave. But that, that is the status of it now. The rights of way do not allow the parking, it's a pass and repass only.
Thank you, Mr. Kinz. Anybody else that hasn't spoken?
Yes, Michael Griffin, I live at nine and eleven Linden Court, and talked a lot about Johnson Ave and the traffic there, but Linden Court is a dead end and also a private way. So my concern is the traffic impact on our street. And cars now either trying to cut through, they always come down, look around, I'm worried about the impact from all these, these trips. And cars trying to get by each other, somebody's gotta pull down. That's where my kids play down the street. We got cars coming down, so that's my, I'm on the other dead end, and that's my major concern, is the impact on Linden Court and also parking. If they can't get me, or they got friends coming over, will there be no parking on Linden Court? Or am I gonna have, we're gonna have, start to have cars lining our street? That's, that's my very big concern.
Okay, thank you. Sir, another question.
David Roeven, eleven Gilson Road. I'd like to scale it down, and my concern is with the parking, Gilson doesn't have any sidewalks. So if this does go forward, I don't know whether it's on the developer or on the city, but need to make that into a sidewalk going out Gilson at some point, and enforce the no parking that's supposed to be there. Because already you've got plenty of people from the apartment buildings at the top of the road who park on the street, and it might be a broader question whether it counts in terms of no parking in general, and there's supposed to be no parking. And just the, the entrance to Gilson Road and Greenleaf. Greenleaf is a very busy street, people use it to cut through, and people park right up onto the corners, and so that's something that needs to be addressed. I don't know, the traffic studies considering much about the traffic flow on and off of Gilson Road, but it's, it's a very difficult turn to make it every morning, and I'm not speeding to reach that yellow light, but there are people who are driving well over the speed limit, and you can't see them, there's the cars. So if, you know, if this type of thing goes forward, there's, the city has to look at the streets and around it and the impact that it has, because it does need for dangerous turns and then for pedestrians as well, so. But the scaled-down size of it is much more appealing than the twenty-four units. Ideally, I'd love to see fifteen, but I much prefer the eighteen to the twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Roeven. Anyone else who hasn't spoken? Got everybody?
Oh, and, sorry, and the, I read the fire impact survey, and said the water needs probably have to be replaced in order to replace the sprinkler system. That was one of the things that Margaret posted on our website. So, and the pipes are pretty old on the street, I know, because my pipes are. So that might be something that, I don't know if that's city or developer, if that's something you have to consider.
Mr. Roeven. We did perform hydro flow tests. Unfortunately, we were doing it, the hydrogen on Gilson Road actually broke, so we couldn't get a flow right into Gilson Road, but we did get flows.
Probably because it's so old.
Yeah, no, so there, I don't know if it's been replaced, yeah, but it's planned to be replaced. Once that's replaced, we'll perform the flow test, but the flow test, we did perform a flow test at the intersection of Greenleaf and Gilson, at the, right in front of the community building there, at the intersection of Hancock and Johnson Ave. Both, both items had really good flow. So, like I said, once we have Gilson repaired, we'll also perform the test there. The other thing, we are improving the sidewalks, but only up to Linden Court. I think one of the problems, once you get further up, you do mention, is a lot of the pipelines pull in.
What's the gas my house?
Yeah.
The sidewalk doesn't exist.
So, but. Thank you. Anybody else that has not spoken?
Good evening, Margaret Lefaris, Board of Council. Just by show of hands, who is here in the room specific for this project? I missed a few of the comments out, and I just wanna make sure I'm familiar with everybody here. Okay. So, board, good evening. Sorry for my multitasking, it's ruined my life. As you know, you, sounds, there's a lot of, I think for the viewer at home here, is that a lot of this work is done with the planning board, the planning director offline, that I'm not involved in the day-to-day of by policy of legislative position that I'm in. We had a lot of concerns at the last meeting. Literally, this document just arrived in my hands today, and this is the recommendation for the planning board, and it's twenty-six conditions, kind of addressing some of the comments that you're making. So, literally half the press, this is in my hand, this is on my website. What I did, just so that you're aware, is we had said before, is this gonna happen, you need, we sent out an email, like, going out about a week and a half ago, did send them a reminder for the meeting. I think the same people have really been consistently concerned about this, and I appreciate you all took the time to be here and to speak up and share your concerns, because a lot of what's been said is, that I was going to say, has been mentioned. Couple of things, particularly Dave, you mentioned about, that are in these conditions, I just wanna share, share specific. We had talked about pedestrian safety improvements in the area. Being conditioned on this project to the commitment of the applicant, not the city. Applicant shall provide a stop sign with a, at Linden Court and Gilson Road, and another one at Gilson and Greenleaf. Applicant shall upgrade curb ramps at the following locations to be ADA compliant, Gilson Road and Linden, Gilson Road and Greenleaf. No parking signs on Johnson. I'm trying to think what else we had in here. I hear you on the sidewalk, I don't know, I know Gilson's pretty narrow, and I'm not sure it would have the width to allow for sidewalk, but if we could get.
Well, there's a, it's already, it's already curbed, but it's not, it doesn't have.
It has asphalt burn, not curb in.
Yeah, correct. Unglutched.
Okay, does it have the width? So a lot of times on roads, it's a matter of, it's probably too narrow, but if they're adding the curb in, curb in. But if we could get a commitment from the administration to take a look at making it a more, you know, sidewalk, because what you're saying is that they're gonna park on the asphalt burn, it was curbed, they wouldn't be parking on the sidewalk, and that would kind of help with the problem in the area.
Or even if he can't walk up the street, when, he can't walk on the sidewalk, he has to walk.
He has to walk on the street because they're parking on the sidewalk, got it. So the other thing I think is important to hear, and I've had some phone calls, and the police have been responsive, we're actually upstairs, that's the meeting's on tonight, is traffic and parking enforcement and, you know, what the strategy is, because it's not, what we have right now is not working. And it's kind of a, they're having people park in the street, so this is like the existing conditions, is, hey, we're parking the street, there's no law of the T, where can I park? The parking patrol officer doesn't find me. Gilson Road's a great spot for that, they can tuck away in there. So I'd like to see from the administration comments to go back to Quincy Police Department, Captain Gillen's familiar with me, calling in this area, but that we send the parking patrol officer, they're not having that impact, it does not belong in the neighborhood. And while we're right off Hancock Street, you know, clearly we've got neighbors here, and it is a little neighborhood tucked in the back there. So the other thing is twenty feet of an intersection. The rule is no parking within, twenty feet of an intersection, it's state law, it's ignored all over the city. And what it is, is that sight line that you're talking about, to say for us to exit Gilson Road, turn onto Greenleaf, in and out, is difficult to see because of the visibility, because people are parking there. So I hear you a lot on clear, this is one of my biggest, biggest frustrations as a ward counselor. Okay, other issues, so administration comments, if those can go back, heard it from the neighbors, heard it from me, that, that is the existing condition, it's very frustrating. The water, I think you just addressed, and I was just gonna speak up about that, about the fire flow. What do we say? Okay. Found adequate pressure in the, in the hydrants on the site, have made a condition, they ensure adequate water flow with the fire department and water department prior to getting the building permits. So that's something that is conditioned in here. I will post this, and I can actually give you guys this, pass it around.
Counselor, I'm sorry, if I could. This is my recommendation that I typically give to the board, they have not actually gone through them all either. These may change before they go.
Okay, I wasn't quite sure we were in the process. Okay. So you'll see there's extensive homework being done, I will say, a lot of due diligence here. Margaret is the principal planner, has been the, you know, the lead, working with the applicant, working with the department, has working in coordination on that. She has what?
How many, twenty-six conditions?
At, at the present time, but there may be a few additional.
So you don't have.
Got it, okay. So, I think with that, you've heard my concerns, a lot of it's been addressed, I kind of hoped that, you know, it's coming down to the minute, hour, they're trying to get this onto the agenda. I, I think it's sometimes helpful as these things, you know, projects, just as a point of reference, get kicked down, kick the can down the road, we really kind of have that summary, what changed? Because for me, I was hearing a lot of this for the first time, while I got a few documents and had some homework that I could do in advance of tonight's meeting. Tonight was my opportunity to listen, and here I am, running between two meetings. So that's just difficult on, on a policy perspective. So I think sometimes when you've got a project change with major changes like this, if we could get kind of an executive summary that's gonna come out with, with any plans, would be helpful going forward. Anybody else, anything in particular where missing and felt wasn't heard? Okay. So with that, I'm looking forward to the, to the, kind of your board's discussion and your, your input, and feeling like I missed some pieces, so.
Any questions? Mike?
There, there were just a couple of items that, we met with the applicants on Monday, and went over a lot of the outstanding issues. Tim, you were gonna submit the trash plan, did you put those copies? We were unable to copy those today.
Peter, Dave, you have the copies I gave you? I'm sorry, I forgot, Dave, I thought you were.
Yeah, that's fine.
I thought, I knew that I had on my hands, too.
They, they were, we did discuss their trash and what we planned. They made some changes to the site so that that would be more accommodating. I think the, the other item that came in was the memo from Paul Hines, and he made some suggestions about.
Email.
The, I'm sorry?
The memo spoke to the condition on Wrightston Johnson, the other thing matters, we just had an email.
Right, that were in the email, yes, and I have, I think you have a copy of that in your, in your packet. Some of these conditions, we, we felt we could add without too much discussion, but we did want to just have some discussion with the applicant about certain things. The lighting on Johnson Ave, there was a suggestion to put a, a streetlight on the poles on Johnson Ave.
Yeah. I, I did visit the site today, in fact, there are two telephone poles on Johnson Ave, but that couldn't be utilized.
Well, what, the question was, is we weren't sure how that process would work, whether the applicant would have the right to put a streetlight on, on the pole? Yeah, if the.
My, my, and, believe it or not, it has a streetlight on one of the poles.
It just needs fixed.
It just needs fixed. You couldn't see, you couldn't see it underneath all the trees, but it does have one there.
There is one on the light.
Which one?
Right in front of eighteen Johnson, right in front of, where they're on Johnson, you got the two houses, right there.
The second one is from answer.
Yeah, second one is from there, okay.
Then I think we could make a condition that they go through the process to repair that light, and have the applicant. The other, the other discussion that we wanted to have was about the upgrades and repairs to Johnson Ave. It is, we understand it's a small road, it does need certain, you know, repairs. It, it, it most likely is adequate for six more additional vehicles on the, on the site. But what we wanted to talk about was during construction, there could be the possibility of damage, so what we wanted to condition was that if any damage is done during construction, the applicant's responsible to repair that. That we did make one of our conditions. The other one was the idea of a fence between the, from, from your email, Paul, it seemed like it was from the corner of the building, but there is a fence there currently on the Sullivan Tire property, so did they want them to extend it from that fence along their full property line, or?
The fence that you referred to, that is at Sullivan, is completely a four-foot fence, and it is in somewhat a state of disrepair. Yep. And then to the next about it, there's a gap, and then there's another disrepair fence. So the thought was, at the request of Attorney Saxon behalf of his client, if they fenced from the Firestone Building, the full length out along Johnson Avenue.
Sullivan Tire.
I could say that all day, it's called a Jimmy's Tire earlier.
It hurt my tenet, nabbed with me.
Sullivan Tire, the corner of his building, down the abutting property lines behind Whitty Road with a, so-called Johnson Avenue, up to the end of the project site. So would dissuade people from parking on Whitty Road and passing on foot through the abutting parcels to get to this development. So I admit, I read it after the fact, and if you made sense of any of it, then you got it right. But it runs from the building to the end of the project site, kind of at the butt of Gilson Road, but between Johnson Avenue and one A, to the butt of, sort of, Whitty Road.
Myself and my brother, we were down tonight, and when we're at the gentleman's building this, we will put a fence, six-foot fence, all the way down Johnson, and tap to the next one. We will have no problem, we'll put a fence up.
And rather than.
No, I have a fence, we're gonna put up, no, we're.
Okay. Rather than a condition, we, you can show that on the final plan. Those are the only issues that we had outstanding, the tracking of the fence, other than that, that's about all that we were looking for at this point.
Do you want to close the public hearing for a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Aye. The department have a recommendation?
Me too, yes. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Based on the City of Quincy's interdepartmental review and the outside peer review, the department recommends that the board approve site plan review in accordance with Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title Seventeen, Section nine point five point one, and special permit under Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title Seventeen, Section five point one point one seven, for parking waiver, subject to the following conditions. The project is subject to the inclusionary zoning ordinance, the applicant shall contact the Affordable Housing Trust Committee for their recommendations related to onsite units or cash in lieu of such units. Any recommendation by the Affordable Housing Trust shall be incorporated into the planning board's special permit decision. Number two, the applicant shall seek approval from the City of Quincy Zoning Board of Appeals or zoning enforcement officer as appropriate for any necessary relief or findings related to the City of Quincy zoning ordinances, as same are not under the authority of the planning board. Number three, due to some controversy surrounding the applicant's ability to build within the area identified as Johnson Avenue, prior to obtaining building permits, the applicant or the applicant's attorney or other representative shall establish to the satisfaction of the Quincy City Solicitor that no rights were obtained by the then-town of Quincy or others by virtue of such an act, and which rights, if any, would prohibit the applicant from now building in the footprint of the so-called Johnson Avenue. Number four, the applicant shall provide the fire protection engineer's system demand calculation for the building to the fire department prior to obtaining building permits. Number five, the applicant shall conduct a water flow test to determine if there is sufficient water supply in the street to support the sprinkler system and the required standpipe system demands in the building. This report shall be submitted to the fire department prior to obtaining building permits. The Johnson Road is a private way and shall remain private, the applicant and owners of this development and any other owners of Johnson Avenue shall continue to be responsible for the maintenance of Johnson Avenue. Number seven, prior to final occupancy permits being issued, the applicant shall install no parking signs along the southern edge of Johnson Ave in order to discourage vehicles from parking on this road and possibly obstructing the flow of traffic to and from the subject site. Number eight, the applicant shall provide a stop sign and city standard pole with a twelve-inch stop line on Linden Court at Gilson Road and on Gilson Road at Greenleaf Street. Number nine, the applicant shall re-strive the crosswalk on Linden Court at Gilson Road and on Gilson Road at Greenleaf Street. If I could just interject here also, the applicant did show us some revised plans that show additional crosswalks on Gilson Road to get to Linden, Linden Street, Linden Court. Number ten, the applicant shall upgrade curb ramps at the following. Number 10, the applicant shall upgrade curb ramps at the following locations to be ADA compliant, Gilson Road and Linden Court, Gilson Road at Greenleaf Street. Number 11, the applicant shall provide a construction management plan to include detailed traffic management plans, including temporary traffic control, crosswalk detours, construction truck routes, staging areas, and other protections, at least one month prior to the start of construction, to the city's traffic engineer for review and approval. No construction vehicles related to this project shall be allowed to obstruct vehicle access to the neighborhood of Gilson Road or Johnson Avenue, or to obstruct access to any driveways of residents on these roadways. Number 12, the applicant shall be responsible to repair any damages to Johnson Ave. that occur during the construction of the project, to the satisfaction of the city's Department of Public Works. Number 13, hours for delivery of materials during construction shall be determined by the city's traffic engineer upon submission of the construction management plan. Number 14, the applicant shall submit documentation indicating that construction activities at 32 Gilson Road, 18 Johnson Ave. will not result in road and issues for abutters. The applicant shall develop a road and control contingency plan prior to the commencement of construction activities onsite, which will include the name and contact information for an on-call pest control company. Number 15, the applicant shall develop a dust control plan to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. Number 16, the applicant shall commit to performance with both local and state regulations regarding noise, as proposed, construction could create noise generating activities. Number 17, demolition. Newly amended regulations require a pre-demol, demo survey for any potential asbestos-containing materials to be conducted by a DLI-certified inspector. If asbestos-containing materials are present, it must be removed by a licensed contractor, and a post-abatement inspection must be performed by DLI-certified project monitor. A pre-demolition inspection of this structure will be required to be performed by the board of Health Department. Number 18, the State Sanitary Code, the residential units proposed to be developed will be required to meet all provisions of Article 2 of the State Sanitary Code. Number 19, applicant shall install survey monuments to delineate the public rights of way. The monuments shall be set by a professional land survey prior to issuance of occupancy permits. Upon completion of the project, the applicant shall furnish to the City of Quincy Building and Engineering Departments a digital file of asset plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site facilities and rights of way. 21, the applicant shall submit a stormwater operation and maintenance plan, which shall be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Keys, and will include the following: stormwater management system owner, the party responsible for operation and maintenance, an estimated operation and maintenance budget, and a maintenance log form. Okay, number 22 is just further on the operation and maintenance plan. The owner shall be required to submit a copy of the completed stormwater operation and maintenance plan, inspection schedule, and evaluation checklist form stamped by a professional engineer annually to the City of Quincy Department of Public Works, in order to document compliance with the approved ONA plan. And one week prior to any land disturbance activities, the applicant shall conduct an onsite inspection with the City of Quincy and/or the city's designated representative to observe the erosion controls installed at the site and review the erosion controls anticipated to be employed during construction. Number 24, at any point during construction, the applicant shall allow the City of Quincy and/or the city's designated representative to enter the site for the purpose of making observations as to the compliance of site construction with the approved site plans and conditions of approval. Number 25, the City of Quincy, at its discretion, use consultants to supplement city staff for, but not limited to, the purpose of site construction observation. The consultant review ask for account shall be fully funded 30 days prior to any land disturbance activities. And number 26, the hours for construction activities will be 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Saturdays. All construction and delivery shall be prohibited on Sunday unless approved by the Chief of Police. The hours for delivery of materials shall be determined by the city's traffic engineer through the construction management plan. I believe that covers everything that we discussed.
A motion to approve?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Do we have a timeline for, the most important thing is, when is this land property is going to be demolished? Do we have a timeline? Now we don't wait for board approval? Because they're working in this state, and if you could give me some communication so I can give a heads up to the authorities, or if you could fly and drop them, like, hey, day-to-day. So people are, you know, kids in neighborhoods, like, it's a...
We should go in and get, how do you increase the audience, because we've done a lot of work to get up.
The utilities area shut off?
Yeah, we have a lot of the wills to be...
30 days, 60 days? I say it's probably for 60 days. 50, huh?
The next item...